This regular meeting of the Mount Moraviria School District Board of Education will come to order. It is 7 o'clock. Role call, Danny.
Here.
Damon.
Here.
Kimberly.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
And I am here, and Diana is absent. Dr. Solerino, can you certify that the meeting has been properly noticed?
Yes.
Please join me in allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a volunteer to read the mission statement?
I will, I have a minute. The Mount Moraviria School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you. Item 2A, approval of the agenda, are there any revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. It's been moved by Jeff and seconded by Kimberly that the agenda be approved. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the agenda is approved. Item 2B, approval of the June 17, 2019 regular minutes, are there any corrections for the minutes? Hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Board's June 17 meeting. Leah has moved, Jeff has seconded, that these regular meeting minutes be approved. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Item 3A, school news, Dr. Solerino.
Well, we think during the summer months, we'd be all calm on the western front. There's some great things happening. I should've said on the eastern front, because we just had a group of students return back from UMass and Hurst. That's our future problem solvers. 63 teams competed, and our school district continue to make us proud. If you get a chance to see some of the pictures Coach Keely gave us, we posted those on Facebook, and want to celebrate all of our students for having made placement to that outstanding and auspicious event. And we also just completed our first of two summer school sessions. This week is what I'll call a bye week, for lack of a better word, because of the 4th of July holiday, we decided we're going to try to host summer school next week. That kicks off, is that right, next week, Dr. Shouta? Sarah and her team have done really an exemplary job of answering all kinds of questions. And I want to also extend a note of public gratitude to Eric McCorman. Eric is a middle school teacher on assignment, inspiring administrator, who's taken on the role as day-to-day operations of the summer school program. And I wish you could see it every morning, he's out in front of the IC, high-fiving the kids, and just wishing them a great day, and that's exactly what we were looking for in a leader like Eric. Outstanding work. And a special note of gratitude to all community members who came out last Wednesday in order to let their voices be heard around the Cardinal Hickory Creek Transmission Line. I came to learn this afternoon, and I might be wrong about the exact date, but I think the public comment period is extended, was it through Sunday?
July 7.
So 7, so, well, that's, yeah. So all are encouraged to continue to let their voices be heard. I'd say probably at the Madison showing, at least in the afternoon, there was easily 200 people. And I think I heard from Kimberly and Ron, who represented the Board, about the same. And I know Lancaster, where I have some family live, told me that it was also equally packed. So, good turnout, let's just hope that we can continue to let our voices be heard on behalf of our school community.
Awesome, does anybody have anything else under school news? Hearing none, we'll move to item 3B, citizen comments?
None.
None, we have none. No citizen comments, we move to item 4A, personnel transactions. Dr. Solerino, do you have any comments before we consider these transactions?
Not that I can recall anything that would stand out, but let me check my work. That, well, you know, might be just mentioning coming this time. Activities Director has done an exemplary job bringing on board another slate of outstanding coaches and sponsors. And this is one that continually happens throughout the year as positions come on. So, thanks to all those folks who are willing to give up their time. We see many of these folks are teachers of our own. You know how hard our teachers work, you add in an extra several hours at the end of the day, that makes it even harder.
Jeff has moved, and we're looking for a second.
Second.
Kimberly has seconded the approval of these personnel transactions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the personnel transactions are approved. Item 5, consent agenda, does anyone want any of these items pulled out for review and discussion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Leah has moved, and Damon has seconded the approval of the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Item 6, discussion item, 6A referendum updates, Mr. Reed, Mr. DeYoung, and Mr. McGuire, go ahead please.
Okay. Mr. McGuire, I assume is in route?
Yes.
Yeah, I know that picture. Was it this last week?
Well, no, this weekend.
Was that the Madison weekend?
This was Madison. Says hello, everybody. Sorry.
How was that barbecue in your backyard with them?
Well, you know, we had tea at 3:00.
Tea, of course you did.
Tea.
Of course you did.
Alright, so, we're, yeah, we have the monthly supply photographs by Kramer, the project, and our Halders supplies me with these pictures. And look at the date, you know, these are fairly recent. I also said some other ones that were from today, and we could look at later. At any rate, so, this is the 600 hallway, this is the ramp area that had to be reconfigured. So that there, the flat area actually met up with the door. What you see on the left there is a window into the aquatics area, or A. This is in the main commons, standing in the gym doors, looking towards the south. That was where the once the raised section of the commons, which is now not raised. And that wall is complete, actually, in the last couple days, that was from the 27th. So, in the last couple days, they've actually installed all the, that wall is complete all the way across. They are really, really moving. Ah, the east, the east commons, the glass is all installed there, all the pressure plates are put in. It's all weather tight, so that's the view to the east area. Lovely, just look at that morning. Lockers are going in, this is the hallway auditorium, we have a right. You're looking down towards the entrance, we have a bank of lockers on either side there. They're in. Out of the front canopy. Finally, that, the front of the schools looked pretty bare, it was last week as they tore all that stuff off. But, that actually, that's the old set, they actually got a deck today. So it's looking, looking just exactly like it looks in the photographs, or the renderings. The greenhouse is complete, I think they've got several electrical connections to make on that yet, but that is ready to go up. I had a chance to talk with Ms. Allen this afternoon, she's excited about how she's going to use that space. So, it's really nice. Auto shop, showing off our two-tone paint job. That is one of the things that we asked for, so we didn't have white wall all the way down to the floor. They'd be gray soon enough, so that is the autos and engine shop. Again, just about completely done, they need to get everything out of there, reseal the floors, and then that space is complete. The auditorium, carpeting is in, safe steps. But since then, that's been touched up a little bit more, the areas of the door are complete. We should be able to start reinstalling the auditorium sitting here shortly. We'll be excited to get that off the stage, be back for the lungs. Oh, atrium, the trowel, the trowel's down. It's been coarse ground, they'll wait till later in, earlier in August, I suppose, and they'll start polishing that out to be your final, your final scheme.
And is it sealed in some way, or what we see when it's polished?
Yes, there is, there is a sealer that goes over the top of that once it's complete, yes, exactly. And that'll be something that I probably have to reapply in four or five years, kind of thing. But, no more stripping and waxing every year, which is going to be a huge help for my editorial staff. Upstairs, carpeting is about the only thing that we're waiting for them to finish. One of the things that we're going to do in the next week, we'll punch out that top, that top level. In fact, the prequatch is next week, where Curry, where Anai, and a lot of people will walk around and say, you know, pick it, these are the things that we need to talk to punch list. There's just a list of, you know, there's a ding in the wall there, this doesn't work right, that's not quite right. We'll make a list, they'll have some time to fix it. Bray Architects, the Inconsidac, will be on site around the 19th to do the formal punch out. We'll do all that stuff out, need you to say, like this, but whatever he finds that needs to be attended to, they'll get attended to, and then we can move in. Just exciting. This is great, this is from the 21st, and that is so vastly different now, it is crazy. That is, that's the upper part of the commons, they've cut away the floor, cut away the tunnel lowered it down, 18, 16 inches, poured the cement back in. The walls around those rooms are already done, it's, like I said, they are really, really moving along right now. The ramp going up towards, that'd be the office on the right. The ramp, there's a column kind of at the bottom there that they removed, they had to restructure some steel up in the roof to support the wall, but then that is a ramp, no more steps to get up from the lower level up into the classroom level. This is, this is Tom Lazar's old science room, it'll become a mash room. Yeah, it's completely different, so we've obviously demoed out all of his science, casework, and plumbing, and things like that. We've constructed a wall, there's actually a door, we do always go into a joint room in the 600 wing, so that will become almost like a suite, if you will. Two small group instruction spaces in between those, that will be where our SOAR program is located. I don't think we do, it's not, we don't do mash either, right, it's all SOAR?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, all SOAR, yep. This is the space that was formerly the kitchen. You can tell by the green tile on the right-hand side, that giveaway. So that has all been studded out, and as you can see, they've got some drywall going back in there. That will become our ID area, and some other special head spaces in there as well.
Can you take a moment just to talk about a potential contingency expenditure on the wall because of that tile?
Right, so, I have a picture later on, okay, great. Along that wall, that tile has posed a problem, and they had to fur those walls out, as opposed to painstakingly removing the tile. So, there is a cost to fur out, but the alternative would be a much higher cost to remove the tile. So, we can show that a little clearer later on, thank you. This is that, where the upper commons used to be, and this is going to be Ryan Finley's health classroom. Again, that wall wasn't there earlier, but later last week, it was, they'd been really throwing the blocks, and that's all done. They intend to pour that over the next couple days, and have that finished out. So, again, maybe much progress. The choir room, new carpet in there, new ceilings. We're taking an opportunity to kind of freshen that up a bit. We'd like to have that back sometime very shortly, so that we can move back in there. Hopefully, that keeps us all, WNS group can move in. Upstairs, the view from the top of the stairway, you can see that the carpet is, I think all the hallway carpet is done today. I think they finished at the top of the stairs, and we're just waiting for them to finish up some of the math classrooms. And again, that will be ready to be punched out, we can occupy some. Another view from, oh, this is, this is looking up at the, this is in the heart of, yes, this is in the, that'd be heart to your right, and that'll be looking back towards the 200 wing where the cut through is now. It's, I took, I'm Marie McCarthy through here a couple days ago, and she's, that went through her for a loop, it's like, wait, where am I at now? Yeah, so it'll, it'll be fun to see people's reaction when they get in the middle of it and see it reconfigured. This is the little theater, hopefully they'll be pouring that any day now. I think they got the rough ends in the ground, and it's prepped, ready to go, so that space will be open a little shortly.
That be tiered?
Nope, nope, it's all fine. So, yeah, we filled in the dip, if you will, and then poured that back in, and it'll be just one flat level.
And they have enough fill from the?
Yes, 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 all, the vast majority of that fill is what came from the commons when they dug that out. There's a little fresh gravel on top to make it right, but that was mostly stuff we had on site. Courtyards, as time allows, they will pour off the patio on top there, put the railings in, and then the capstones are here from the seating walls. They'll be starting to do some landscaping there, finishing it up really, really soon now.
Oh, the rain, we've had, that drainage has worked.
Worked quite well, I guess, thank you very much, it's worked very well. The east side.
I still have a question about, is that the height of that wall, is that finished?
This, this one right here?
Yeah.
Yes, that is the height of that wall.
Why had that pictured much taller, based on the rendering?
I think we may have seen some taller versions, and we may have said, you know, needed to be quite so tall, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, but yeah, that is a cap, like it's a seating, you know, a capstone on top of it like that, but it's not going to add anything to the height. The parking lot itself will paper away to be a little bit higher, I mean, it will look higher. The elevation between where that's at and where the parking lot is, is somewhat lower, there are a couple feet.
We have balance in there as well.
Lot of balance. Actually light balance.
So that, is that seating level, that wall then?
I would like to say oh for sure, but yeah, I think that, I think there's a, there's dirt and grass or something on the other side of it, so that would be indeed seating level on the other side, but not on the back side.
Okay.
Right, and these are, these are, this is actually the, you see the canopy, they put, they've got the deck on there. They're really trying to get that button up, so they can start doing some network and that concrete work up front. The footings are all in for the walls around the seating areas, around the building, and by what we call the teacher enters. Again, there's that, there's that, the commons, there's a little landmark, so three poles that are on the left there used to be that step that was between the upper commons and the lower commons. Well, you can see that the poles remain, but the floor's been, has been brought down to that level. And on the right there, there will be some play cabinets on that wall, and then you can go down there a little bit, you can see there's the school store, is that first opening and a storage spot beyond that, and then the concession stand beyond that. So, that whole wall is, you know, continuous down through that stretch now.
That canopy, I would perhaps be over the whole block this, but they had told us that when we approved this, that it would be a little bit higher than the old one.
It is.
And now it's a foot over the brick behind it. So are they gonna cover that in?
Yep. Better. Yeah, there won't, there won't be a gap between the roof and the facade of the school. We'll be able to see through that, everything, it'll be.
We need with the owner, architect, and contractors tomorrow morning, and we'll be certain to make that available to common. Thank you for that.
This is what a typical classroom, I put this in there because this is what a typical classroom will look like now. Prior to, you know, prior to this remodel, it was all glass above the green area there, and solid above the door. So, what you're seeing now is a little bit of a reversal, where we've got transom and side lights around the door, and then a couple of barroom lights in frames, as opposed to the rally, oh, just basic glass, you know, sandwiched in between wood across the top of that wall.
So this is the 200, 300 wing?
This will be the 200, the 300 wing, there's so little left of it, that it'll look different, they won't have the glass over it. But this would be, this is the 200 wing, I want to say this might be Martin Dubrin's old room. It's going to be his room back in, but that's, I just wanted to show you the difference in the configuration of the, of the room. You know, again, going with staff's desire to have that barroom light remain, because the original design was to take it all out. I think it's a fine, it's a fine choice. And kitchen stuff has finally started to arrive, so we've got some of the serving counters and things like that that have, and equipment back into the kitchen itself that have arrived. So that's exciting to see those things getting installed and ready to go.
I think that was the last of the questions.
I think that was the last of the pictures that I had. Oh, you know what, there might be, I think I've had a picture of it with Fabri in that, in that room too.
Dave, can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Will one of the 600 wing be complete in the touch-ups, or what do you?
Uh, new question, I don't, I don't think I know that specific. And by the 600 wing, are you referring to like room 605 that we cut in half? Or is it all?
Oh, that whole wing, like where the computer lab, cassettes, that, that.
Okay, and with regards to being able to install stuff?
Yeah, and also, won't there be, won't there touch-ups and some other?
Well, for the, for the most part, the rooms in the 600 wing aren't being touched, there's not much going on in there. Unfortunately, they are, they are a very large storage facility for me right now. So everything that came out of the 200 wing lives in the library in all those rooms up to 600 wing. So, as soon as we can, I think it was in my email, sorry. But anyway, as soon as, as soon as we, if you need to install equipment, like smart interactive displays and stuff, I think the rooms are open enough for that sort of thing. I probably, we probably want to, you know, put tarps over the, I don't think that we're done with the dust yet.
Yeah.
Soon, soon I will.
I have four pictures.
Okay. I must, I must not have, sorry, I did it there, must not have did it there.
Okay.
So, milestones that they've given us here over the last 30 days. We've completed the canopy foundations, as you've seen in there, trowel flooring is ongoing. Four of the slabs in both courtyards, those are, like I said, just about done. Majority of the remodel demolition is complete, there are some, a couple things that they'll run across, but for the most part, demolition is complete in the building, and they are actually building back everywhere. Framing in the classrooms and corridors are done, as you said there. Slabs in the animal headroom, aquatics, all those, all those slabs are patched back in. All the underground plumbing is in place, you know, there's, the brick layers are finishing up walls here and there, and then stuff. So, again, moving right along, rubber flooring and carpet in the remodel area has been ongoing. Door frames, barroom lights down the 200 wing, curtain walls, storefronts in the face of the east. It's all ceiling grid in area F, which is the, is like the atrium area, places like that, those are just about done. Curtain gutter, oh, this is, these are things that are going to go on over the next year or two. We're going to punch out the second floor, curtain gutter installed in the new parking lot in front, where the modules used to be. Complete the residence flooring, we have some residence flooring that needs to be finished in the animal aquatics area, and upstairs, one of the mechanical rooms, that's scheduled to begin in a week or so. Roofing and base area at the canopy, doors and trim, begin overhead door install. We're looking at getting all those big overhead doors down through the tech ad areas installed in the next couple weeks. Finished drywall down the 200 wing, install engine equipment, exterior concrete, site concrete outside the plaza in the back of the school, and of course, all the concrete work going on in the front. Install cabinets in the classrooms in the 200 wing, and complete all site utilities and site grading. Those are the things that they've, we're looking to complete over the next 30 days.
Any questions? Furniture is on its way too.
Furniture's on its way.
We have a transition delivery meeting July 20, or July 15. I'm in delivery then the week of July 29.
So we should be ready for the furniture to go directly to the rooms that it is, going to be, we don't have to stage it, all of it, in the gym. And so, some other projects that are going on, you know, we've been able to get the leachers replaced in the main gym. There's more going on at the ELC, this referendum base, as far as HVAC stuff and controls, those things are going on. The drainage that we're going to accomplish along the side of this building, the gym, is scheduled to start in the next couple weeks, weather permitting. I don't know if I can come up with, off the top of my head, there's a lot of moving fixes. A lot of moving pieces everywhere.
It's so great to be ahead of schedule with the upstairs, the new addition, that allows us to move right in. And of course, we can't necessarily put bodies there right now, but we can have our furniture assembled and ready to go in its proper spots.
Right, and our plan is to, is to start moving the course with the teachers' materials up to those rooms. We'll have to, I've been asked, can we get around the rooms and start testing, it's like, well, I don't know that I have that answer for you yet, as soon as possible. You know, I know that's not a very good answer for somebody who wants a solid date, but I said, you know, when we get a little bit closer to the finish line, we'll have a better idea of what to, or what you can do. So, I've had a lot of hard hats, and they could be upstairs, we're working, we're hard hats up.
Are you getting a bunch of attic stock for the carpet?
Yes, there is, and I wish I had the exact number, there is a percentage of all componentry. So, not that I really want paint, but because paint doesn't really have a long shelf life. There are, there are ceramic tile, carpet, base molding, there's a specified, you know, percentage of attic stock, yes.
I would just maybe ask Bray if that sort of standard percentage should be increased a touch for a school, for carpet specifically.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to look at what the, what the percentage is. If I remember right, when somebody told me, I'm like, geez, we're going to keep all that.
It varies from product to product, maybe 2%, 5% depending on every individual's back section.
I know exactly what you're saying, you know, I, one of the things I'm going to have to do is get a kind of an eyeball on what that act stock looks like, and then find a hole for it. I'd like some shelves and things like that to store it. So, yes, I can certainly, you know, look at that and say, you know, how much of that stuff, I don't need 200 gallons of paints on the shelf until I need, because they look, as long as I know what to get and where to get it, I'll just take, I'll take a five gallon paint, thank you very much, and we'll go through that quick enough, so. You have any questions, are you? It's exciting, it's like, ugh, but it's so nice to see them stop beating stuff up and taking it apart and putting it all back together.
That's right.
Thanks.
I have one second question, the picture with the lockers?
Yes.
Wait, is that floor getting redone, or is that floor staying? Because that floor looked pretty beat up, and I couldn't remember.
It depends on, so, so again, the idea is that we're going to, we're going to get new floors almost throughout the building.
Right.
There is, there is some places where we're not, we're not getting new flooring. So it might depend on exactly.
Yeah, I was trying to visualize where that was, and then I was trying to look at that map on my phone.
Is right here, is where those lockers were?
Yeah.
One of the items that's for the Board's consideration tonight is a potential to match this wing here with the rest of the, rest of the buildings, and then the only area that wouldn't have new flooring would be the area you see kind of here in a light blue aqua.
That, that area has VCT tile, and there's just your regular shaters, 12 square tiles. And, you know, it probably could be replaced, but it's not extreme in that need to be replaced.
Because it did, like, that picture, it looked like there were chunks missing, but it could've just been.
And we do, we do have stock of that to make, replace tiles and things like that, so. We, we, I've certainly talked it over with the C group about what our plan would be, since it's not being touched, it gets stripped and rewaxed and things like that.
That's my next question.
Yes, that would be, you know, we're getting down to, there's not much left of the building, it gets stripped and waxed. It's, it's getting less and less, there's a few science classrooms, we're talking about this hallway right here.
Yes, that one.
Yep, there, like that, that spot over there, I mean, that would, that would strip off and it'll actually clean up.
Okay.
And there are some places where we do have to relay in some tile. And I'll take this opportunity to, you know, okay, so, you know, how are we going to make this look right? Because the tile, and sometimes the tile gets patched in with something that's close to the color.
Right.
Yeah, so I will, I will work really diligently to make that look like.
And is that the same, like, hallway, like when football teams come to visit, is that the same hallway they go up and down, or is it a different one?
This, this is standing, that, that picture would, would be looking at the atrium from like the intersection or that, by that door that goes on stage. So you're looking at the, at the donor wall there.
Oh, yeah, the donor wall, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so, again, that's more of the utility area, we don't have a lot, we don't have a lot of outside traffic in that. So again, that's more of the utilitarian, we don't have a lot, we don't have a lot of outside traffic in that area. Uh, the hall, the football players that go down that, that's going to be something that I have to work with Colleen about. How do we, where do we want them actually walking out across the trazo floor in the cabinets? I don't think so.
I'm listening.
I don't think so. You know, we, we, well, we, we put carpets down and stuff like that, so. Again, you know, one of the things I have to tell people is like, once we get in here, we're going to have to kind of look and see how this building works for how we do stuff. My guess is that they all go out with, like, corridor nine, which would be that, that door that faces the east there.
Okay.
Again, I have to work through that with Colleen.
Other questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Scott, anything from you?
Not nearly as exciting as all these great pictures in progress, but just kind of from an administrative point of view, behind the scenes. I spoke with our insurance carrier last week. They're looking at their calendar to see when they can come up shortly after the building opens because obviously we need to update our, our values of our property and, and make sure that we're completely covered. So just know that the company that we worked through to get our builder's risk policy to cover the construction process is also the company that I'm working with to, um, to prepare for, you know, sort of final appraisal value of the building.
Kevin, anything for, from you?
Sorry I'm late, I tried to time my entrance and you must have got through your agenda a lot quicker than I expected. No, it's, I think everything's been going pretty well. We've got, you know, averaging over between eighty and a hundred workers on site each day, so it's been, it seems like a lot of disarray, but we've, you know, we're all, we're all moving in the same direction. I think everything's gone well. The administrative team has been good to work with.
I can echo that back, you know, our, our RFI system is really clicking now. You know, the turnaround time is, is quick, so that we have, well, as our time is, gets shorter to the finish line, we have to have answers on. Things that pop up in the course of the day, it's like, well, it didn't look like that in the, you know, so I appreciate your, you know, your quick turnaround and creativity, you know, from the subcontractors and from Craig as well, to give you good solutions on the bigger of the problem. But yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks to, thanks to you all. Item seven, action items, item seven A, consideration of flooring proposal for the 600 wing of the high school.
Dr. Soler.
Well, thank you again for having Board Vice President Heiss bring you back to the sketch you see here on the screen. We have proposed using some dollars that are available through savings and or contingency to help bring more completeness to our flooring in the high school. And so we're proposing a rubberized flooring system, very similar to what you know will be in the rest of this building, that would extend into the 200 wing. There are two different types of flooring, one's called a Shannon flooring. It's a little less expensive by about four or five thousand dollars. However, we've been advised by Bray as well as others that by spending a few extra dollars more, we'll have a more resilient flooring with this rubberized flooring. And so we're asking for the board's thoughtful consideration of allowing that expenditure, I think it was sixty-six thousand dollars? Yes, sixty-six, four thirty-four in order to accomplish that.
I understand when Dave said that the area around the auditorium in the gym in blue was not in terrible condition right now, but just curious if you got a bid, as we know that it's more cost effective to do stuff in one shop and take it for a while later.
We did not get a bid on that, but certainly if that's something that is of interest to the board, we'd be happy to work with the finer bodies and see what, what that additional enhancement might be.
My guess is that work would have to occur next year.
There's not enough product in the United States right now to use that.
Steve's going to go to chairman.
Jeff was going to join me, we're going to agree on that.
Yeah, I don't, probably won't come back.
They've actually got it on hold for us pending the board's decision, and if we didn't want it, we could just let it go. But that way no one else can take that.
I'd be happy to give price, I mean, you know, at least know what worth, knowing the type of cost.
Should you get us past that information via podcast?
Yes.
We can hear the number.
Please and thank you.
Sure.
Other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Been moved by Danny and seconded by Jeff that this proposal be approved. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the proposal to refloor the 600 wing of the high school is approved. Item seven B, consideration of summer 2020 supplemental referendum work from savings and interest earnings and partial pay reborrow.
Thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to continue what we think is a very exciting time for our district in that we're under budget significantly such that there's an opportunity for us to go back to our facility long-range plan and begin to identify what are those things that we can help, um, in the spirit of the question that was raised by our, by our constituency. I placed that question here for you under public content. What are some things that we might be able to utilize some of those savings for? And after visiting with and talking with a large number of people consisting of our facility's steering committee as well as faculty and staff who throughout the years we've gone through the process have said, hey, you know, have you ever thought about this? Or have you ever thought about that? We've been keeping kind of ideas. And then the administrative team, as we're working through things, are saying, gosh, we wish we had thought about this when the design was going on. Students have given us feedback about this, as well as some of our booster clubs and the like. And so what you have here listed in green and in bold are those items broken out by safety, security, building systems and infrastructure and classrooms for the 21st century that we believe fully honors not only the board's referendum question, but then also the long-range facility plan. I imagine if I were in your shoes, the question might be, well, gee whiz, how much money is there to, to be expended without going into the remaining $5.5 million borrow that's not, that's not been touched yet? And the answer to that is, we don't have a very clear understanding of that because not all of our line items have been fully brought to, to the zero bounds. We'll know more about that, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, probably with our last application of even sometime in, or maybe even Kevin, sometime in October, November-ish. Uh, but we do know that irregardless, we don't think anything would change in terms of what we would recommend. These are the needs of the needs and the amount that would be borrowed would be determined at that time. The board would have, as they have always had on those borrows, time of authorization. We'd go out to market as we have done in the past together. Our bond rating and all those kinds of things that you, you help us in, in approving. So I don't know that I could offer any more insight other than just giving that very Reader's Digest overview of this. And maybe I'll turn it over to those who were part of the committee meeting last week and my colleagues, if there's something maybe that I missed or you would like to highlight that we didn't talk about.
Um, so at our last Buildings and Grounds meeting, we discussed this list at length. And we kicked around for a significant period of time the question over the final borrow and whether it's appropriate to do this additional work or inappropriate to not do the work. And the conclusion that we came to as a, as a group, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was unanimous conclusion, was that it is perfectly reasonable to execute the items in bold on this list. We feel like the items on this list are 100% in keeping with the, um, our mandate, you know, for this current referendum. We think we'll probably have to do a final borrow to accomplish it. And the other conclusion that we came to is that it didn't make sense to us, again, after a lot of discussion, to base whether or not this work should be done on whether or not we were going to do a final borrow or not. There was a total dollar amount associated with the referendum. We, having said that, we don't think we're probably going to borrow the maximum amount, which begs the question, well, why not? You know, why wouldn't we just spend it all? And the conclusion we came to is that while the items on this list are 100% in keeping with the mandate for this particular referendum, um, we don't think we're probably going to be able to go too far beyond this, if at all, without regrouping and doing more planning. So we will probably, at least this is our feeling, we will probably close out this particular referendum somewhere shy of the total dollar amount, but we do feel that it's appropriate to make a final borrow. And so as a consequence, as a committee, our recommendation to the board is that we put this, the items in bold up. Did I summarize that?
Absolutely, absolutely. I want to compliment, compliment on your, your summary. It was, it was terrific and absolutely accurate. And I wanted to just reinforce two points. One is that we, we really discussed at length this idea that we couldn't go any farther with, with the projects on the list before there was substantial planning involved. That was, that's what really backstopped or stopped this all together in terms of, in terms of, in terms of doing more. It was that there would be the kind of planning, large-scale planning that we've done in the past needed to go beyond the, the projects that we recommend to you for your approval. The other is that we want to be sure that between now and the time that we make a decision about that borrow, that we're as judicious as we can with particularly savings money. We understand that there are contingency dollars that may have to be spent based on work that's, that's ongoing now, but we just want to be as judicial as possible, preserve as much, much of that money as we can to, to help pay for that project and limit that, that borrow. And that would send, I think, an outstanding message to the taxpayers of the district when we, when we do that. And that's why I think it's very, very important for us to be as judicious as we can be with that, with that money.
Motion to approve.
Leah has moved and Jeff has seconded the approval of the supplemental referendum work. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a question about the finances of it, because I thought I knew this and then the more I thought about it, the more I confused myself. So the mill rate that we have currently was based on 38.5 and debt service for 38.5. So if we don't do the third borrow, it would just mean we'd pay down sooner. But if we do the third borrow, there's no impact. We just stick to our schedule. Is that accurate?
It would be that we, yes, I think I understand your question. And yes, we would only have two full borrows, 23 million phase one, 10 million phase two, and a, you know.
Some partial of the.
Of the 5.5, which means in, in total, yes, definitely less than the 38 and a half. Pre-referendum, we looked at the financing plan that had the three phases and it was projecting out, of course, at that time it was only a projection, if the referendum passes. And if the projections that Robert W. Perry gave us for interest rates on each one of the three borrows became true, this is what the mill rate would be. Now, the mill rate fortunately, because equal, property values have increased greater than what the projections were. The mill rate had already been lower simply because property values had increased greater than what they had planned. They planned very conservatively and the market allowed it to increase more than what they planned. That said, that in combination with borrowing less than the five and a half on phase three will allow that projection to be even further.
Thanks.
Can I get some clarification on your motion now? Are you moving that the work be approved or that be approved to go to bid?
Um, that it go to bid.
Okay.
Mr. Hannah, any question?
The extended sidewalks, the ramp, I had a couple of people contact me over the past six days. They wanted to know, is the sidewalk going to go all the way across the south side of the first diamond and wrap around the corner to the leechers to the second diamond? Or are we going to have a sidewalk come off of the parking lot there to there?
What we'd like to do is we'd like to study what exactly is needed. And we would take this back to Buildings and Grounds once that design has been completed, along with a bid to do that work and go through the normal process. So we'd really welcome those individuals' input as to what they'd like to see happen. I know we also want to talk with our softball boosters who have been just exceptional at every turn with much of the work that's been done out there at the, the softball fields. And of course, if you have ideas, Board members, we'd love to hear it.
I think just the pad or dead center or leechers and ball.
Say please say it again?
Put a pad at the second football field.
Yeah.
For, for the leechers on.
Yeah, I think that was donated by our softball crew, wasn't it?
Well, so the varsity field is, I mean, all the work that's been done at the varsity field is, the vast majority of it has been donated through our softball club. And we've already approved through the finance committee some additional work that will put dugouts at the JV field. They're not quite as, they'll be encased like the ones at the varsity field, but they'll have roofs over the top of it, cement floors, things like that. And then there was a shed, I think, that we, that they would like to put out to store their equipment in. So there are some, there are some already in the works improvements to the JV field.
So I have another clarifying question on the motion. Does the motion then automatically include that we're authorizing as much of the third borrow is needed to complete the supplemental work? Or is that a separate motion to authorize the third borrow?
Based on your comments.
No, no, go ahead. I was going to say, please answer it. Oh, well.
I would, I would suggest that maybe just for clarification purposes, that, that people who motioned and seconded might consider amending their motion to reflect that it would include whatever amount would be necessary out of the third borrow, understanding of course that the formal borrowing process would come before the board.
Okay, that's, that's what I wondered if you needed.
Thank you for the.
Formal approval to pursue.
So there's no misunderstanding.
Yeah, it was the intent of my motion, so.
To bid and borrow?
To bid and borrow.
Okay, terrific. So Leah has moved and Jeff has seconded that this work that is available in the document generally had a potential additional referendum scope be bid and borrowed forth? Is there any further discussion?
Pencil sharp, please.
Please. Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the summer 2020 supplemental referendum work is approved. Item seven C, revised course proposal, computer power to Microsoft Essentials, Mrs. Draca.
So the education committee discussed the movement or change of the year-long computer power course divided into two semester courses, Microsoft Essentials one and Microsoft Essentials two. Core content of the courses will remain the same. Mrs. Baber and our employer Alison Carroll working this summer on some higher tweaks with the curriculum and integrating the Microsoft Office Specialist Certification back into the program that used to be there a couple of years ago. But the largest changes will be from a year-long course to two semester courses.
Any questions for Sarah? Any questions for Sarah? Jeff has moved and Danny has seconded that the, uh, course be revised from computer power to Microsoft Essentials. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the course, uh, is revised. Item eight A, some comments. No, some comments. Item nine, future agenda items, as listed on the, uh, agenda available on board docs. Likewise, item ten, scheduled next meetings. Item eleven, closed session, contemplated closed session per section 19.85 subsection one, paragraph C of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering employment promotion, uh, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Jeff has moved and Leah has seconded, uh, a motion for the board to adjourn to executive sessions requires a roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion carries, will go into closed session in five minutes.